...to order if we could stand with the question.
Okay.
My allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to welcome our guest tonight. We're going to start with Kirk, with Charles Schwab.
Well, it's SJS Investment Services. The assets are held at Charles Schwab just for their protection. So your account statements.
Appreciate it.
From Charles Schwab, but we serve as a registered investment advisor. So you've got to fly who's going to join me in this meeting. So if it's flying around.
He's really on you.
Yeah, he really was. So first, thanks for allowing me to have a few minutes here to start your meeting. I appreciate the time. But more than anything, I appreciate the last 20 years that you guys have been entrusted your business with SJS. I know, again, it's I mean, 20 years is a long time. It was May 25th of 2005 when we started. So and so we've been managing a portfolio, part of the assets for, you know, since that time. So in front of you, you have a packet, and in the packet are some slides. And I'll cover these. And Mr. Hodgson mentioned maybe 10, 15 minutes as far as kind of a timeframe. Does that does that work if we can fit that in?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So within these slides, you know, the really, the objective of today is to give you first an update on how the portfolio has performed, how it's positioned, but also just looking at kind of, I know that you're in a position where you're looking at what to do with other assets and maybe how to view the markets given the interest rate environment. So that'd be the other part of the meeting is to kind of share some of those thoughts. So there's within your packet, on the lower right-hand side are the numbers, page numbers. So I'll just kind of point to the page numbers and I'll kind of share what we have. So first, on slide three, it just gives a little bit of an update. Who is SJS? We've been around, we're going on our 30th year now. And again, we're just an independent registered investment advisory firm. We manage about $2.5 billion of assets. We have just over 20 public entities that we work with. It's a mix of individuals, endowments, foundations. So it's a broad mix within our firm. You can tell that if, you know, if we've been around for 30 years, 20 years, you've been a client for a long time. So we appreciate that. So I personally have been doing this for over 30 years, working with public entities and managing bond portfolios. If you flip the page, it shows our team, the depth of SJS. We've grown quite a bit. And again, just we'll see a bunch of pictures of everybody from the team. When I first started, there were only six of us. There's now 21 plus a dog. So actually, a dog gets more comments about than anyone in it, but then our more clicks on our website. So if we take the next page, which is slide five, this is just a reminder of what the investment objectives are. And I don't think it comes, it's anything unusual to hear that the investment objectives are safety, liquidity, and return. But just how you view those objectives are really based on the assets that you're looking at. So when you think about your daily operating account, the daily operating needs, paying payroll and paying bills and everything else, that's going to be more of a checking account style investment. In your vision of safety means they can't have any price movement at all. You want, if you put a dollar in, you want a dollar out right away. And that's going to be available every single day. But then there's also those core dollars that you're not touching. They're used for projects down the road. Not looking at it for any immediate liquidity need. You look at those objectives the same way, but slightly differently. So when we think about safety, we want to make sure whatever we're investing in, we can get our money back out of like US Treasury notes, or government agencies, or bank CDs that are backed by FDIC. So but when you do that, we're also looking at buying things that have longer maturities. It could be one, two, three years' maturities. And if you buy something, the price can go up and down between the time you buy it and the time it matures, it can go up and down in value. We buy everything with the intent to hold it to maturity. So the issuer being, you know, primarily US Treasuries, we just want to make sure that the US Treasury can pay that interest back and principal back that maturity. So we do look at that a little bit differently, but again, still those same objectives. And we want that liquidity and that aspect of liquidity means if we want those dollars, if you need those dollars, we can get to the market, sell them easily, and deliver the money the next day. So that's what liquidity means to us in this circumstance. And then lastly, return is generating a fair market rate of return. What that means is if we're buying portfolios or buying, building a portfolio with maturities from basically zero to three years out, we want to capture the fair rate of return for a bucket of bonds that have a very similar type of interest or maturity type of length. So we track that, and we call it a benchmark. And so I'll share with them a little bit how we've tracked over the last 20 years to a zero to three-year government benchmark. If you flip the page, the next way that we look at this, and this is probably the first step in, it shows identifying cash flow trends. And this is really just illustrating, and this isn't your cash flow, but what we would do is say, the way you determine the right buckets, how you identify where money should go between checking, a Star Ohio or public fund savings, is really mapping out what are those liquidity needs, what are those cash needs that you have from an operating standpoint. Then we typically recommend putting an additional cushion of 10% to 15% of portfolio in a Star Ohio or in a like kind of account that would come from a bank that they backs those the same way a Star Ohio would. So that bucket provides that next level, if there's, you know, immediate, you know, need for some liquidity that you weren't anticipating, and all of a sudden it comes up, you can go to that bucket and you can, I keep saying buckets. That is my silo thinking. It's just, you know, money goes in buckets. And so when you think of it, it's the checking, it's a Star Ohio, then the remaining assets go into a core portfolio. The core portfolio is kind of how we have it highlighted on here. It's just identifying those dollars, again, that you're not looking to use immediately, and you want to try to maximize the return. So using a little bit longer maturities than overnight, or just immediate cash, but again, just kind of moving it out to zero, three, and government bonds. So I'll kind of show why we want to do that. So when we build a portfolio of zero, three-year bonds, and when, as we're looking at this, you know, there's two different risks that we're managing. The first is reinvestment risk. And reinvestment risk means if we have bonds that are really short-term in nature, and interest rates are falling, it's going to, that rate's going to reset at a lower rate quickly. If interest rates, if interest rate risk on the other side is if you buy, as an example, you buy a bond in 2021 when interest rates were near zero, and it's a three-year maturity, interest rates go up during that period of time, now you're stuck holding that bond at a low rate when there's current rates at a little bit higher. So our job is to build a portfolio that balances those two risks. So as we know, when we're managing, we're stewards of public dollars, you know, no one's going to give us a pat on the back for making an extra little bit of money. What we want to try to do is just make sure that we're not guessing what that next big interest rating was going to be, but just position a portfolio so that you're balancing both reinvestment risk and interest rate risk. I bring those up because that's what, that's part of what we do when we build a portfolio is to make sure that we're balancing those risks appropriately. The slide starts to get a little bit busier here. I apologize for that, but they do tell a story. And I'm a picture tells a story kind of person. So on slide eight, it's a one-year, where it's a yield history of a two-year Treasury note that just shows the yield of a two-year note over the last several years. And you can see, you know, going into the pandemic, interest rates were trending higher. That's the blue shaded area. And then during the pandemic, or right after pandemic, interest rates went right to zero as the Federal Reserve moved rates to zero. And it stayed there for two years. And then all of a sudden, inflation hit, and the Federal Reserve moved interest rates up pretty considerably in a short period of time. The red line is what's really kind of the interesting part here, because that's a one-year moving average of that two-year Treasury. And the reason why that's important for us to look at is if you're managing a portfolio that has zero to three-year maturities, you're looking at by basically like an average of two years somewhere in that your portfolio. If interest rates are falling, like they did during, when COVID hit, you can see the red line, you're securing and you're protecting some of those bonds in the portfolio. They're still generating cash flow because interest rates go to zero, but some of your bonds in the portfolio were at 2% and 3%, even though current rates were at zero. But as they matured, we had to reinvest them back into the current rate market. And so as interest rates started to go higher, your Star Ohio cash rates went higher. But at the same time, we had to let the bonds and mature, the bonds in the portfolio mature before we could reinvest them. So that happened on the way up. So if we're looking at just what the average yield of the portfolio is, it's going to lag a little bit on the way up, but it's going to protect cash flows when interest rates are trending lower. So this is just showing you kind of how interest rates are trending. And over time, what it does is it smoothes out the process of kind of how you're positioned capturing fair rates within the market. Any questions on that? That was, you know, that was a little more complicated, that that topic there. But the next slide is slide nine. It shows how the portfolio has tracked these different benchmarks. So the dark blue line is the return of the Village's portfolio. And then the light blue line that's basically right on top of it is the zero to three-year Treasury index. So that's basically the benchmark that we track. And you can see that the portfolio for the last 20 years, these are live numbers for 20 years, has basically stayed right on top of that zero to three-year. The yellow line is three-month Treasury bills, which kind of serves as a proxy for Star Ohio or other type of money market type of investments. So you can see that just having a little bit of the long maturity within the portfolio, there's times where it's going to be beneficial and times where it's not. And it's just going to be depending on when we see those sharp drops in rates and sharp spikes in rates, which we've recently had to deal with. The thing is, is we can never guess those, right? None of us in this room know when that next event is going to happen in some of these situations. So having a portfolio that's positioned to be able to weather those types of storms and move along the current market rates is really kind of the important part of the process. So if you go to the next slide, US Treasury yield curve, this just shows where current rates are today. And it looks like a jump rope. It's really kind of an unusual looking yield curve. And what this really is showing is it's plotting out the yields, the blue line plots out the yields of the US Treasury note for each of the corresponding maturities across the bottom. So you can see, basically, your three-month yield is somewhere in that 4.3. I put a star where Star Ohio is. The Star Ohio is 4.47 as of today, but it's been dropping as interest rates have been coming down. You might look at that two to three-year area where it's about 3.9% and think, well, why would I want to own 3.9% if I can get 4.47 in Star Ohio? And the reason for that is if you go to the next slide, we don't have a crystal ball, but what we do use is what the Federal Reserve Board shares with us at each one of their meetings. This is a future of what they expect future cash rates to be, or Fed Fund Futures rates to be at some point in the future. So it plots it out. And they issue this after every one of their meetings. It's all the Federal Board members that, all the Reserve Board members, that really cast their vote of where they believe those rates are going to be. And if you look at where those rates are going to be, going out the next two to three years, the rates drop between 3% to 3.25%, 3.5%, are what most people are projecting. So if you're comparing 3% of what they think the future rate's going to be compared to nearly 4% of what you can get in bonds today that secure your yield, 4% starts to look good, or that 3.9 doesn't look nearly as bad when you think about where rates could be. The thing is, we just don't get, we don't guess, and we don't know. But the markets are pretty good at pricing. The US Treasury market trades about $800 billion a day globally. So it really kind of, it pulls in all the noise that's out in the marketplace. The next couple pages get a little busy, but I'll get right to the point on these. This is your current, these are your current holdings within your portfolio. So each of the individual bonds that make up the current holdings. I'll highlight the current holding, the current portfolio today, when you look at your average weighted yield, is 4.38%. So that's where you stand today. And off to the right-hand side, in the, in the red box in area, it just shows your average duration, or basically your average maturity of the portfolio is about 0.8 years. If we flip the next page. Now the print's getting a little small. So slide 13. This is where, if you were to take money out of Star Ohio, I'm just using 4 million as an example. Again, I'm not just taking a number just to share with you what we would do and how you'd position this and why. But we would add, in the blue highlighted areas, those would be bonds that we would recommend to the portfolio. Towards the top, you can see a couple blue lines. Those are to kind of fill in gate gaps within a bond ladder, meaning that there's maturity periods or times between maturities that we could fill to have something else come due. As you start looking towards the lower part of this list, you start seeing bonds that have longer maturities that really kind of fill in a two to three-year space. This would fill out the portfolio, would take your yield, because as we're showing in that current yield curve, there's current rates that are about 3.93, 3.94 for some of those longer ones. But then we can also use selectively sometimes agency bonds that have some call features that give us a little more yield boost. So if we mix some of those and fill in some of our portfolio, you really can, you know, secure more of your portfolio at close to 4.2% is where this would put you. So just to give you an idea of how and why we would do this, what happens now is as each maturity comes due, you have that, those in there that are shorter are taking on a little more of that reinvestment risk, but if interest rates stay elevated here. So currently, if we talk about current market situation, the Federal Reserve has been kind of on hold, waiting to see, you know, what the data is going to tell us about the proposed tariffs and how the tariffs are going to impact, you know, potential inflation or potential economic growth or slowdown. So again, whatever that impact is, the Federal Reserve just doesn't have the data to be able to tell what it's going to do. So they're in a tough position because if it does cause inflation, then you can't, you really are put in a hard position to lower rates during inflation. So they're not likely to do that. However, the administration's been very vocal that they would like to have rates go lower in the future because they've got $9 trillion of debt that they have to reissue. They'd like to do that at lower rates. So there's a dynamic that's, again, makes it more challenging and puts a lot of noise in the market. The way you get rid of the noise is you just have something coming due on a constant basis, and you're able to invest those dollars back at the new market rates and keep your portfolio moving along that line and away from guessing what's going to happen next. So just to summarize this. Last slide here. Again, we appreciate, appreciate this opportunity, and we value this relationship. It truly comes down to what your liquidity needs are and kind of getting away from trying to think about what the next move might be in interest rates and to just put it in a disciplined approach. And we believe that's your best longer-term answer. We've been able to deliver that market rate of return for 20 years. We feel we can continue to do that. The process, the format, we make ourselves accountable to the process and the returns. So as we mentioned, if there are additional assets that you invest in the portfolio, those would be assets that would, again, fill some gaps, extend the maturities a little bit further out where we don't have as much exposure, and selectively use some callable bonds to boost the yield to touch. So.
What does that mean by chase? The goal is not to chase the yield. What does that mean?
So just looking at what the best yield in the market would be. So if I'm going to the market to go, all right, I'm going to, if I'm looking for the best yield, if I look at that yield curve, I'm just keeping it right in cash and earning 4.47.
That's exactly what I was assuming, but that's.
Yes. So we wouldn't just chase that. And so you have to have rationale to, why would I accept a lower yield? It's because I can't control the future. And if six months from now, especially if interest rates are at 3%, then I've secured 4%.
That's right. That's what I thought. So.
And if we're wrong, and it goes the other way, let's say interest rates go higher. And right now, maybe the Federal Reserve at the next meeting comes out like, you know what? Inflation might be an issue. We're going to start moving interest rates higher, and we're going to have to, we're going to start projecting that rates will move higher. You can bet the market will start to reflect that, and you'll see higher yields in the market, which give us opportunity then to reinvest at higher yields as well. So you have both the flexibility.
So to lock in if they drop, but to reinvest if they go up?
Correct.
Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mary, you're a bond expert now.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Um, when we get those returns, do you guys just automatically reinvest those for us? Where do those go?
Absolutely. What happens, there's a couple dynamics that take place. There's interest that's paid along the way. So a bond might pay interest. If you see those dollars go into a money market account, that's a government money market account that's ORC-eligible, and it earns about 4% right now. So then, as something matures, then we'll use the proceeds from the maturity, plus any of the cash that's built up from the interest, and reinvest that back into the portfolio.
So you guys just keep reinvesting on our behalf until we say we need to draw that money out or whatever?
That is correct.
Do you guys notify us every time that a bond is matures? Do you reach out to, so let's say that we have, let's just say a bond, we had $300,000 invested, and it matures, and do you guys reach out to Matt and say, or our financial officer at the time, and say, hey, this one is matured, or what do you guys want to do with it? Or do you guys just automatically reinvest it?
We automatically reinvest it. We can, we can reach out, but historically, the process for us, if we're managing 20 accounts, we're doing something similar, is that we just, if we stay within the investment policy statement guidelines.
Kirk, I'm not suggesting that you guys do. I'm just trying to get an understanding of how do we know, what triggers, right? You guys, you guys just keep trying to make us money the best that you can until, and then it's our decision this meeting, is to make sure we invest what we can invest and keep liquid what we need, what we forecast that we're going to need to reinvest.
That is correct. And that's where the conversations go. The meetings that we have are updates on how the portfolio looks today, and then also what are the future liquidity needs that may impact this portfolio, whether, again, there's something that we need to adjust for.
And then my last question, I hope, is when, if we invest $4 million, let's just say, and, and we realize we don't necessarily, we want to invest this, we don't necessarily see that we're going to need that anytime soon as far as any big projects coming up. And then a catastrophe happens, and we seem to need that money, and we've got a lock, you know, tied up for three years, what is our strategic plan from there to get that money back?
That goes right back to the very beginning of liquidity of the bond matters. So we can sell every bond immediately if you have to. And there's, what we would do normally is look at that portfolio, and you'd say, do we need 100% of the portfolio, or do you need, you know, 200,000 or 2 million?
And we would get whatever, whatever that rate was at that time? Is that?
Correct. And we would, that's correct. And we would, we would select, go through the portfolio, because there's going to, there could be bonds that have a gain that you can realize a gain, or there could be bonds that have a loss, and you'd look at the loss and say, we don't want to take this loss. We need to do something different. So we can make decisions.
Is there any other penalties, other than just the, maybe take a loss if we, if we didn't allow it to come to maturity? Is there any other penalties as far as early withdrawal penalties or anything like?
Not on government bonds.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I appreciate your time. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your time. If there's any follow-up questions, please pass them along, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you for preparing these for us, Kirk.
Absolutely.
Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Josh, can you hand me, I think there was some time on the chief's floor.
A sign-off sheet, you say?
Yes.
Yeah?
We have public safety, and I'm the chair of that. I have nothing to report tonight. Are there any questions for any team that I can answer?
Um, we're working on getting an Ebleville meeting scheduled, our district.
Josh explained it.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know, we're working on that. Matt will be in touch with you on the date and time. We're hoping for next Monday, and hopefully you can be there.
Yeah.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
If I'm working, I guess that's on cover.
It will be here.
It will be here.
Yep. It's, it's going to be here, correct, Matt?
Yes.
So that is not a public meeting. That will be, so we're working on that. Matt's working on it. So I just wanted to let you know, because we may, we're asking you. Thank you very much. Matt will give you the date and the time once they lock that in. Thank you, Chief.
We're going to move on to public, public works. Hello? Terry, Josh?
We got a new playground put in. I don't know if anybody was aware of that. It's really nice. The guys did a great job. Nice equipment.
Lots of confidence.
Yeah. And they're using it too, so.
So we made a good decision putting that initial one down there rather than.
Absolutely.
That's wonderful. That's what we went down. We took a look at it. Sanchez did a great job, him and his team.
Yes.
And I reached out and told him, thank you very much. He wanted me to reach out to you and make sure that you were satisfied with it.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
And then I think we just need to put in the cozy?
Yep. Yes.
Is that something that's on schedule to do?
Yeah, we are going to pick out a location.
I think if we put it in the back corner, I think there'll be plenty.
It might be a good spot, yes.
Plenty of room.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do want to maybe look into getting a new paint job.
Oh, we'll definitely, we'll definitely do that.
Yeah.
The piece that stayed with the guy. Side left to bridge. I don't know if you guys are aware of the, the bridge reconstruction has commenced.
It started?
Yesterday, yes.
No, I went there today. It was almost demolished. They were still taking pieces away, but the old Esparus Bridge has been developed.
Yeah.
We had some questions at the last meeting about the, the streets we, Kirk, how's that, how's that coming?
Well.
We got that back, correct?
We got it back.
On request?
Last Sunday, yes. I ran it last Sunday and Saturday with absolutely no problems. And they didn't do much of the stuff that they wanted to do. I mean, they fixed a hydraulic leak, a cylinder, a couple electrical components. I don't know the total extent of it, but when I got it back and ran it for those two days, these warning lights aren't coming on, and some of the things that they had said they needed done and gave, given estimates. So I think we hopefully continue to run it.
So, so Matt, Josh reached out to me when I was at work. We talked about it. Josh, they'd had it for quite some time. Josh reached out to me and said, look, we need to sweep before Memorial Day. I said, well, where are they at on it? And he said, well, they've had it for, and I said, so he reached out, talked to them. They weren't sure when it was going to be done. They fixed the hydraulic leak that they, that was the main concern. And I said, call back up there and see if we can go get it, right? Because we, he said, we need to get these streets. We called up to see if we could rent one. From them first and foremost, I think, from them first, right? They said, well, we don't do that. We, no, excuse me. We reached out to Finley to see if they would rent us one. They said they would rent us theirs, plus, but they would need their operator. It was.
$200 now in operators.
To do an old town. So we, so then we got talking. We said, well, let's reach out and see what it costs the community to rent. Look, Miss Josh was adamant about getting the streets swept before Memorial Day. So thank you so much for that. And then I said, we'll just reach out and go call it. Did they get the hydraulic leak fixed? I said, is there anything else that you might be concerned with? I said, call up there and see if we can't go up there and get it, and we'll return it later on, as long as it's in working order. They said it would run, it would be fine.
Yeah, they were going to patch it back up to the point where it could. And I don't know what that entailed, but by running it, I ran it four hours one day and six the next.
Thank you.
No problems, no warning lights, no nothing. So.
So thank you for that. So please just continue.
And that's not saying it's not going to happen again, but I don't know. I don't, these dealerships and stuff, I mean, there's not a lot of faith to be had in there. I mean, I'm hoping, I'm not saying anything wrong, but.
What, is the plan to wait until something, the lights come on, or are we going to take it back?
Yeah, I would say at this point, if those lights don't come on.
So I'll be making comments.
Continue to run it. I'm not, I'm not so sure. And I'm not a mechanic or diesel mechanic.
We don't expect you to be.
I'm not so sure that this hydraulic leak wasn't causing this. Exactly. To go into D-ray is what it's called. The sensor senses it and kicks the engine down, lowers the RPM to prevent damage. Now, that didn't happen. So when I ran it, when we got back, so I'm saying maybe that was it, but then, and I don't know.
So can you ask them what kind of a maintenance program we can, we might be able to get on? So for instance, if we have that thing, maybe, so, so we need it in the summer. We don't need it in the winter. We can drive it right on the highway. Maybe we could take it up there in the winter and have them preventative maintenance it every year, see what that cost would be. That way it would be dependable during.
Exactly. What they suggested to me, a lot of people do, in addition to our, the stuff we do to a scheduled intervals, people would take them up there once a year.
I think that's, yeah, maybe that's something we need to take a look at. And maybe next time we purchase one, please see what kind of options are out there rather than just.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, as far as that, we're going to run it.
And it's running fine at this point?
It did for me. The end's going to run it on Thursday, so we'll see what happens.
Thanks for that.
And aside of that, we're going to, hopefully, weather permitting, start trimming a bunch of trees next week, so.
We got the bucket truck.
We got the bucket truck.
Got the bucket truck.
I just wanted to mention the playground equipment. Obviously, it turned out really nice, but I haven't talked to anybody else, but it's a pretty. nice, but I haven't talked to anybody else, but it's a pretty big step up into there. Throw it out idea, maybe some dirt should be brought in to make it more gradual to walk up into it. So we can talk about it later.
Think about, yeah. Oh, the other, one more thing. We got in on this township sign grant. We're getting between 14 and 15,000 dollars for three signs, so nice.
I got something on my desk, Kurt, I might have took it home, about, had a notification I meant to tell you about, and I'm sorry that I forgot while I got you here. It reaches out, there's a, there's a group out there that will come in at a cost, I don't know what that cost is. I'll give you the pamphlet. Maybe you can reach out to them. That helps. They come in and train or teach about traffic signal lights. You know how we had those issues down there? They'll come in and they'll actually train you and our guys on proper maintenance of them and
With the components and the locks?
Yep. And they will train our guys, I'm pretty sure. So I will get that with, to you and maybe we can at least, we'll call them and at least inquire. That way, I mean, it's going to save us a lot of money if we can do that in-house rather than try to reach out. But it's something we can look at. I've got to say something to you until just now.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any questions?
All right. Want to go to move on then? Thank you, Josh. Public Utilities, council.
Well, I think I'll leave up this discussion to Brian and Josh on all these details.
Okay. Well, so the first thing on here is, I brought it up, just reached out to Intact. Kind of curious if the council might want to talk about it. Basically, just cameras at the water plant, just for additional safety reasons. Nothing we brought it up, no incidents. But I just thought I'd look into it a little bit and think the council's a discussion. My point, my understanding is not mandatory to have the cameras there, but I think it's mandatory to have the fence, correct, at the water plant? I'm guessing that additional security is a benefit. I'd pose it to council for further discussion.
Brian, do you see a need for with the fence being there?
Um, well, yeah, yes and no. The reason, the reason I would say yes is because we, the gate doesn't close all the time. We leave the gate open. When we get there, we open the, whoever the first person there opens the gate, second shift closes the gate when they leave. So, the administrator came out to look for me or Josh, one of the two. None of us were there. So, the doors are unlocked to the building. So it could potentially have a safety concern if somebody be able to just pull in, go up to the plant, mess with stuff.
Sure.
In the past, there was normally somebody always there, but you know, now we're busy, we're working and we're out doing everything else. So there's, I mean, it could be an hour, two hours before somebody's back there. So I, you know, he talked to me about it and I said, you know, I agree that it would, could be a safety issue with somebody being able to go in and, you know, even if they just turned the dial on something, it could affect our water, so.
Water being the most precious commodity around here, we'll make sure that we at least pose the
So how would we be notified if something did happen? You know, is it just something that you're going to have to touch, or?
Well, we would have it recorded, which would be a thing too. But yes, we could, I was, I was the other camera, sorry. We could go in to let him look.
But you would have to know that that dial had been
Correct.
And would you be able to touch that?
Yeah, uh, my guys would catch that. So typically, they do three or four walkthroughs throughout the day. Once when they first get there, the plant's down, when the plant fires, they would redo another one towards the end of the day. Second shift does it. So, and that's their sole purpose is to go look, make sure everything's feeding at the proper rates, what it's supposed to be feeding at. So, yeah, that would, they would be caught if, if that was to happen.
Is that pretty much all they can tamper with, is knobs and?
Yeah, for the most part, yeah.
If somebody knew what they were doing, they could go in and contaminate our parts.
Correct, correct.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, how would we know that if they, if they did something? Would we be alerted?
Not sure that you would, but at least we would know who the culprit is, I think, just like, just like any other strike.
Just so they turn to.
Could the, could the camera for this be put into the dispatch office or that?
Uh, yes, I would say so. I already looking, I already have code actually for additional camera outside the police station and additional monitor for, that's always live for the dispatchers to view constantly if they would like. So that would definitely be, it's possible, yes.
Doesn't the fence have a code on it?
Yes.
Why are we leaving it unlocked? Why are we leaving it open?
Because they're driving in and out of it all the time, wearing tear on the equipment, waiting for it. It takes like three or four minutes for that thing to open and all the way up. So, I mean, and that's, you're constantly coming in and out. I mean, that thing's going to constantly be going, open, close, open, close, open, close. So we just typically, when we're there, we just open it and normally somebody's there. But there's time frames that we're not.
But when you guys aren't there, you guys close it?
At, at night, yes. But during the day, I mean, because those guys might be on the
Second shift, your second shift closes.
Correct, yeah. So typically it's closed at 4:30, 5 o'clock when he leaves to go to the sewer plants.
And the reason why he closes is because he's not back.
Correctly, correct.
Wearing tear on the fence, correct.
And then we have, actually have a remote in the truck to open and close it. So we don't have to keep going every time.
So where does the claim put the cameras? I mean, are they at the doors or?
Well, position of the camera will be located in the northeast corner of the warehouse point at the gate, which will also cover all doors and bays on the streets building. The second camera we mounted above the door to the office in the streets building and then covering the overhead door and main door at the water treatment plant. So, get it front and then
And we have monitoring capabilities, we're taking the department, correct?
Yeah.
And we would be able to just set up a monitor and record it and
It would probably already go into the camera system that we already have.
Yes.
Perfect. There you go. So we don't need dispatch to be monitoring your
And what's the difference between the basic plan and professional?
Uh, it's as simple as the quality of the camera. Professional one is like, it's long range, infrared, night vision, enhanced AI detection capabilities. The basic one is just basic next gen indoor, basically we have in here kind of thing.
If somebody
Maybe a little bit.
If somebody was to break in down there, let's say, over the fence, is there any way that that be, that's detached? Like that fence could be climbed, correct?
Yeah, correct. Currently, right now, no.
They could catch that.
I mean, we, we don't have an alarm system that would say somebody broke in.
Right.
If that's what you're asking.
Yes, sir. That's what I asked you.
Certainly, we do not have that.
So the 1244 would not record at night because of those
It would still record, but I'm not sure the exact quality would be like, but I would think that the infrared and all that.
Because I would think we would be more likely to have some problems in the evening.
That's why, that's why I just asked that in case, I mean, when we're not necessarily there, that somebody might break in, it would be nice to, I mean, if somebody was going to try to do something down there, they're probably going to do it when we're not there or our guys aren't there. And then it would be nice to know if somebody did. We had them on night vision. We had a culprit. That, she would have to call you, sir, if she would have.
Oh, that's
How about adding a motion detector to it?
The cameras are already motion detected.
You know, I mean, alarm, they would
Open an alarm.
Bring it into the police station or something.
You know, that might not be a bad idea right there. Maybe not even just a motion detector, we should tear a light on. I mean, what a great idea. As far as, maybe we could consider doing something like that at night, right? That way, you know, if it's, if somebody comes in down there, the light comes on. If, if it's one of our guys, it's no big deal, right? We don't try to throw a camera. But if it's not one of our guys, two things. We at least have a face to go with the culprit and hopefully it deters them and they would, and they would be, do we look into something like that, Mr. Robbins?
Josh, can you, Josh, I think That could be a basic spotlight in addition to the camera, which I don't think would have to be that expensive. I would think, maybe
How do you make it solar?
It could be solar.
Yeah, give some thought to that if you would, just
I don't see why not.
Did you have any other questions?
You could probably tie an alarm into the existing auto dialer alarm system too, maybe.
Scary system, tie into the scary system.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Thank you, sir.
Are you going to speak on the equipment authorization?
Yes. So the next thing up is the use of equipments authorization form. I may more concise than the previous versions, as you can see here. And then I also have the use authorization form at the end of that. And Brian, take it from there.
Yeah, I, I know part of the concern was whether, if somebody was using our equipment, that they'd be insured. So I actually reached out to my insurance company, called them. It was about a 30-second phone call. And then they ended up emailing me and sending me a certification of liability insurance, stating that if it was on my property, it would cover any damage to my property or anybody else, third-party person getting hurt. My insurance coverage would cover that. So I know that was a big concern. So I, once again, reached out to make sure that they would actually do that. So part of that, that paid contract, whatever you want to call it, states in there that you have to show proof of insurance or liability if you wouldn't want to use any of the equipment.
Well, actually, the wording didn't say you had to. It said
I believe that got changed, correct? We changed that?
It didn't on top of the
Okay.
So it said that we could.
Okay. I thought we updated that. Just must kind of get it
Is it required?
Yeah, that it's, that it is required.
And Josh, did you reach out, reach out to our insurance company to see what they would say? I know you reached out to them, but what, I didn't see it was
I did not. I thought that we agreed that we should not, so our cards, I think we said? Maybe, maybe misinterpreted that situation. I don't know about it. But I not will say.
So I, I, I'm in support of this. Hopefully whoever's not supportive, bring it to us. I am not in support of it if anybody is using the equipment to make money.
I don't think that
Right, you cannot use it.
Correct.
But also if there's, you know, maybe a church that needs something done, if there's, if, we just help the legion hang, if we don't support it, it's got to go away. We can't help those kinds of things. There's a lot of good
I believe we need to reach out to our insurance company to see because third-party, whoever signs with us, that's releasing them on liability, but third-party, it is not, it's not covering us. So our insurance would need to kick in. So we'd need to know if that would be insured. And two, our attorney sat right here and said that he would not advise doing this. I don't believe our citizens would approve of us using it on, you know, for our employees to use it. It's going to be wear and tear and it's the tax dollars that are paying for that wear and tear. And when we need to go and replace it, then they're going to come at us and go, but why are you allowing employees? And it's, it's nothing against the employees. I'm not saying that. I just feel these are the citizens' tax dollars and I, I feel that we need to be responsible with that and not overuse our equipment. I just feel that our citizens are not going to be happy about that.
Well, you know, one of the biggest things, in my opinion, is our, our employees are in almost every department way underpaid. I mean, considering what else is out there. So it was pretty much a perk to say, you know, when, we can't pay you what other places are paying. So at the end of the day, you know, we're going to allow you to use this equipment as, as, as basically a benefit for being a village employee. You know, for example, Attica, I mean, I'm not the only one that gets the emails. I mean, they offered somebody in my position $50 an hour. Kent just offered, starting out anywhere from 27 to $36 an hour, plus depending on your license, up to an extra $6,000 a year because you hold a license.
You're just saying it can be an additional benefit, doesn't
Correct, correct. Yeah, so, because we can't afford to pay what other places are paying.
And I support that, if you can pass.
And I think that we ought to try it on a six-month basis and see how it goes. So that's my opinion.
Can, can we though get a confirmation from the, our insurance company for sure? So we have, so we, so we know for sure that part's covered?
Well, what part might, so
Well, just, just that the insurance company says, yeah, we looked at your form. This is great.
Oh, I got you.
You don't have to worry about
Is he showing you that his insurance would cover if
Well, that doesn't mean everybody's
Correct.
We, we have, his insurance is going to cover, but I'm telling you, they're going to come after the ones holding the money. And the third party is the one coming after us if something happens. If they get in an accident transporting it to their place of wherever they're going to use it, the third party's coming after us and we need to make sure we're covered.
I just think that this has been on the agenda for quite some time. I think it should be, we should
But I specifically asked for him to check on the insurance.
I agree, but I think that we need to take this to a vote, right? And then
Without checking with our insurance?
No, you should have that information by, by Tuesday. That way we can move forward or put it behind us, right? I mean, this
Well, then I just, again, I want to reiterate that our attorney advised against it and I don't understand why we have an attorney that we
But his, and his letter that he wrote, part of his concern was that our insur, my insurance per se would not cover third-party accidents or anything like that. So that's why I reached out to my insurance. So when, when he spoke on that, he's saying he's assuming that our insurance wouldn't cover it, but my insurance clearly will. So if you can't show proof of insurance that you, you'd be covered, you'd be disqualified to use that equipment.
Right, but they're going to come after us too. So we need to make sure that our insurance is
I, I backtrack on what I said earlier. We did reach out to the insurance, but that was like in May, May 12th. The guy, Thomas Welch from Accra Sure, who goes with insurance, he said he was, reach out to the risk management team and get back with me. They get back with me. I should have followed up. I apologize. I do say, well, Nick Leach from Pep, he did say that he had a similar discussion with Chase before and he rescinds a whole harmless indemnity agreement also.
That's what he did for Pep? He just said
Pep himself said that to me.
That they would have to sign a whole harmless to the Georgia
Yes, which I believe is built into our
But again, I would, I would want to know if they're going to cover a third party. I, I understand that the person taking it home
Yes.
That they have the insurance coverage. But again, if they come after us, a third party comes after us, are we covered? That's what I want to know.
I will send a clarifying question and also go check with, with the risk management team on that side.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I think that's the, that's the big, that's the key thing. Get that solved and this isn't easy.
But, yeah, but even so, regardless, just take it for a vote. And if it gets voted down, then this thing's finally behind us, right? Or you guys vote to support it, right? It's a six-month thing. Then we move forward, try for six months. But it's up to you guys. So I think at some point, right, we, we just got to say, okay, we got our information. Let's put it on the agenda for
Or we don't have the information.
Personally, I just want that third-party thing
We need the information 100%.
And you'll have that before next Tuesday's meeting, correct? Send out to everybody?
Yes.
Well, that'd be great.
You had said that we wouldn't help the region anymore. Can you elaborate on
You know what I'm saying? We wouldn't be allowed to help the region.
I have that question too.
Yeah, why would we?
Because if we did
Because we might just
Did it during the day on company time, that, that's not, we, do we do those things after hours?
We did it on Saturday.
Okay, well, you're asking.
Friday night.
We did it on, oh, it's Friday, excuse me. We did it on Friday night. Yeah, we usually do it on Saturday. So
So we would just have to move it to a time that you're, right, we're already working. Correct.
Yeah, we'll see.
All right, thanks.
If I could, I'd like to add something. I was going to move it up into public utilities because it's what it's to deal with. I'm currently going through the inactive accounts, which is basically overdue water and sewer accounts. And if, if it's like a rental, we're going, whoever opened the accounts, who we're trying to get to pay for the overdue bills right now.
For water.
For water and sewers. So what I had passed out is basically our code. My question to council is, and I'm just more like, we're here for discussion. So if I don't have any luck with, let's just say, a tenant, my current plan was to assess that overdue bill onto the property owner, which is what the state, so I'm just seeing if that's, everybody's in agreement that that's how it should be handled.
So what we do, what we currently do is if there's somebody, and this would, would this only go, would this go to a property owner or is it usually a property owner that does it? Or is it usually somebody that's renting? That usually, or is it both?
Both.
So if somebody renting, then we go back onto the property owner?
Correct.
The liability owner. And if it's somebody that was to sell their property and move off, not paying it, it would get assessed onto the person getting ready to, that needs to get it turned on?
Well, it'd be assessed to their tax, well, it could be assessed to their taxes, but yeah.
We wouldn't turn the water on, correct?
Correct.
If somebody owed three hundred hours and left, we just, the new owner just doesn't get the water turned on?
Correct, that doesn't sound right to me, but.
I'm, I'm making like every effort for it not to be assessed, because then if you were the person who owns it, just more fees get added. So this is part of the process, the treasurer, the owner, so forth.
Right, we had this conversation, anybody that rents has to pay deposit. We can't do that because you can, I think you told me you can only hold so much money in escrow or something like that, anybody don't understand that. I, I know they do that for, for rent, for rental property.
I know, I'm saying, for everybody, if I bought a house in the Village of North Baltimore, why do I not pay a deposit?
Well, the problem is, because technically with that, if you're holding it for a small time, you technically have to pay interest to them on that money that you're holding for them. So that's where part of it lies, and that's through Ohio advice code.
Do we do that with people that are renting?
I, I, that I don't know what they do with that, to be honest.
I would say, I would think the same rule would apply with.
Yeah, I would assume yes. I, but I, I haven't read into it that much, I just remember seeing that you can't.
Can you look into that a little bit more first, please?
Are you referring to a security deposit that the vendor pays the property owner?
No, they have to pay us. Pay us.
Correct.
Anybody that rents that gets the water turned on pays, I think it's a hundred and thirty dollars?
Correct, unless you're Pro-Tac, unless Pro-Tac, you're renting off Pro-Tac, and then they have a minimum of two hundred dollars. Right, this is the rental company basically, they own most of the.
That way if they, if they leave without paying their bill, we at least get the hundred and thirty. I'm saying, why don't we get that across the board for everybody? If we do it to the rent, why couldn't we do that?
Other utilities do that, only like if they have a history with them, then they'll, they'll forego that, that deposit. Like if you've never had, held an account with them before, they assess you that deposit. But if you've had a history with them, and you've had a good history with them, they forego that deposit. Is that something that we could implement?
Yeah, I think we, I think anything's open right now, Matt's been working diligently trying to get, trying to get people to pay these back. I mean, with very little success, I'd say, right?
So.
And he said, what, what do we, what do we need to do in this case? But then what do we do going forward, right? So that's, and we had this conversation up here, but I was, last I thought we couldn't do that.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding, that we could.
That we couldn't hold that, but like you're saying, other.
Other, I mean, I know Hancock Wood does that, Columbia Gas does that, so.
So, yeah, I think that's what we should look into, in, in, in my opinion, you know, somebody that moves out of the Village of North Baltimore and leaves us holding to, um, at Donald Smith Street, right, the guy who said, yeah, I'm not going to pay my whatever. And they had a, they had a late, late fee and paid half of it, ended up getting four clothes on his house. Um, he, I went out and talked to him, he blut, he said, I'm moving back there, it doesn't seem to matter. So I come up here, and he said, pretty much, not only so the late fees, like, right, so he only paid, I think he paid half of it. And so he only paid half that month, and then didn't pay the next month, and we were stuck with that. And I'm thinking, we gotta do something about this.
How long do we let them go before the water gets shut off?
No, no, um, no, that's, that's not, this is when somebody kind of just ups and leaves and don't.
Right, so it'd only be a month, right? It's only a month, because they paid the previous month, so it's just that one month. And what a hundred, you said something about a hundred and thirty for renters?
That's what renters pay right now.
Does that usually cover?
No.
No?
No.
Well, then at least get someone.
So I think we ought to see what the, Brian will look into it, I think that we ought to start the policy of what we could, because it's, it's, it happens unfortunately more than, than it should.
It usually ends up being, it usually ends up being about two bill cycles, depending, depending on the way, just the way it progresses.
Give us a little protection if we.
Yep, that's exactly what my thought was, is get something back rather than nothing at all, so. Excuse me for just a second.
Thanks for that.
All right, let's move on. Do we have any other, well, Mike walked out, but do we have any other questions that?
So since, so I'm sorry, when we last met, we had Dan Klein help treat the reservoirs. So two weeks ago, he was actually helped apply the, the product. Last Friday, Dan and I treated the reservoirs together, and I had him actually drive the boat, because we use a Garmin GPS to track where you're driving, so you get coverage of it. He, he done pretty well, he was excited to help out, he was actually very thankful that we helped him, showed him how to do it. That was part of, you know, him getting that little extra for his licenses to make sure he understood how to do it, what, what he needs to do in, in the event that, you know, our department's busy and we need to do so, and he, and somebody else needs to help. So since then, we've also got the mixer installed in the Grant Road Tower. And we did have a booster pump go out, so we had a spare one, so we replaced that, and we got another one for order. Takes six, eight weeks to get one, so we typically keep one of those on the shelf, just because when it goes bad, you need one. So, but other than that, I mean, it's normal daily operations. I have completed the, and put in all the lead service lines, because we will start doing lead sampling this month in June. My plan is to start calling residents that got added to. Once we, part of the EPA mandates was we had to identify all lead service lines within the village. So we had areas that we knew were more than likely to be lead, so we've identified those. We ended up identifying like eighty-five lead service lines. But through EPA mandating testing, we're required to test the residents' homes, wa, their water that has, is being supplied by a lead line. So with the new, when we redone the water mains, we lost a lot, we lost a lot of lead service lines because those were all old, and we replaced them all with plastic and everything else. So now we have to come up with new homes to get that, so I've submitted those addresses to the EPA, which they'll approve as just a form, so they're all on there now. So probably June sixteenth is my guess, best guess, is I'll probably start calling residents that have lead service lines to see if they want to be a part of that program. And it's, it's real easy for them to do, we drop off a bottle, paperwork explains how to fill it out. The water just has to sit idle for six hours, and when they turn the water on, they fill the jug up, they just sit back out by their door, we go back up, back around and pick them all up, we send it in for testing. Once those results come back, we have twenty-four hours to notify that resident of what their results are. Typically, we, we just hand deliver them, and then we have to show proof to the EPA that we are doing all that. So lead, lead becomes a big pain, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of moving parts per se, but we're, I'm going to be showing Matthew Smith and Jared George how to do that this year. Been working on being able to at least put in the information in all, all the EPA reports. Not saying that anybody else can do that right now, but they would be able to learn how to do that. So we're teaching, teaching those guys how to do that also.
Cross stream, right?
Correct.
That's exactly what I want to see, thank you.
Other than that, it's all good.
All good, all right. Does anyone have any questions for Brian or Mike? All right, then we'll move on. I need some technical.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I don't have anything, but you have anything?
We've talked about it, some in the past, and property two oh nine East Frazier, they didn't pay, the insurance company didn't hold the money in escrow. So I've been emailing them somewhere the last couple of months. They had, wrote a check to North Baltimore for ten thousand dollars last year, which was short of what it actually cost for the demo. And they just emailed a couple of days ago and said they are going to pay the additional two thousand three hundred, so it hasn't showed up yet, but the good news is, is they plan to.
Thank you, Matt, very much.
And Mr. Dumont will most likely be selling the property to someone in trash or for the developers.
So that's, and the, I talked to at least one of the neighbors down there, they were tickled, tickled to death to, to hear that potential. So that's about this one. Were tickled to death to know that somebody was interested in that property.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, we're going to move on. Personal policy and ordinance review.
I don't have anything but Josh does, so I'm going to turn it over to Josh, well, which I'm going to, off to little cats, who have been patiently waiting, thank you for that. And then to our residents, who I'm assuming are here for the same reason.
Yes, we have three, Diane Patterson, Pat, and Tom.
Yeah, and also Jacob Lamb right here is our code enforcement officer. He also has prior experience and would be the one most likely to take care of this, or addressing this issue going forward and whatever way that looks like. So anyways, little cats.
Well, Josh contacted us to come and talk to you, to all of you about your, I call them community cats, so sort of an umbrella of feral, stray, abandoned homeless cats. And, you know, we're happy to help, I guess we're trying to assess what you guys need, how many cats there are. So Kevin and I, my husband, started this program because we live in Bowling Green, and we live by campus, and a lot of cats get left with students. So two cats quickly turned into about thirteen, and about two, three years ago, I started my nonprofit because just access, I mean, part of the problem is not, low, there's no access to low-cost baby clinics. It's very hard, COVID did not help anything. And I can tell you from working our tails off, no pun intended, for three years, that the problem in Bowling Green has gone down significantly in some of the trailer parks we focused on. And I, I'm here to advocate for, what we do is, we do TNR, it's a humane method of controlling the population. We don't relocate cats, we do not euthanize cats unless it's absolutely necessary, they're very sick. But I can tell you from what we have done in three years in Bowling Green, and now we're working in Toledo, that the program, I wouldn't be here telling you that, I mean, it's a, it's sort of, I wouldn't be doing it, I didn't believe in it. And we're actually almost up to a thousand cats in three years with the people we've helped within Wood County, a little bit in Sandusky, and in Lucas County. And I can tell you from working in Gypsy Lane Trailer Park, we did seventy-five cats there last year, and I can tell you on the backside, they had no kittens now in the second year. And that's huge. I know if you are feeders and caretakers, I can tell you that, for instance, we were working with a town that started finding people for feeding the cats, I'm going to tell you that doesn't work, because people are always going to feed the cats. Cats are territorial, they know where they get fed, they're still going to come around, trash. I really think investing in a TNR program is the way to go, because it's not overnight, but I think in two or three years, you'll be happy with the results. We've worked, I don't know if you have any questions, we've just done this so much, it's really not that hard. You have to have funding, and people committed to the program. And, you know, you could get it under control in a couple of years, and, I mean, I'm sure there are certain pockets in our Baltimore like there are in Bowling Green, so I don't know where your problem is, but.
What's, what does TNR mean?
Oh, so TNR is trap neuter return.
Trap, trap what?
Neuter, neuter is spay and return. So we go in and we trap the cats, they are vetted, so they will receive, so all cats get an ear tip that are community cats. They are spayed or neutered, they get rabies, and they get a tattoo, and then they recover overnight and are released to the same area, we do not relocate, we don't take the cat somewhere, they're returned to the same spot they're trapped.
Perfect, Ms. Col, Mr. Ms. Colback, isn't that something, don't you guys do something similar to that, or not?
Well, these first pictures, I've got six hundred dollars into this kitten.
Oh, my goodness.
We found it on O twenty-five, and we was on our way to Finley, we knew something was wrong, stopped at a vet. They've seen it three times, broke it, fractured leg and skull fracture, just throw it aside. I can't not do something. So they cast it, and by the third visit, one of the technicians wanted to adopt it because they lose the flap of their ear if they got a skull fracture. And our neighbor, bless her heart, she's passed, she started to GoFundMe. I said, you have to go to the vet, because I don't want to be responsible or accused of the money. I went in another time, and I just asked at the desk, how much did that fund draw? I can't tell you, it's not in your name anymore. I didn't want the money, I was just curious, but I paid six hundred dollars for several.
So essentially, yeah, essentially what we go, go in, and Josh contacted me, I'm assuming there's a problem with the feral cat, or I call them community cats with a problem, and I don't know where they are.
All over.
And we go in, we, we trap them, we take them to a veterinarian that, we also learned in this process that we work with clinics, there's, we work with all clinics in, four clinics in Northwest Ohio. You really need to stick with a clinic that knows about high-volume TNR. I don't recommend trying to partner with someone, you're, I don't know who, there's a vet in North Baltimore, but you, you have to stick with a clinic that understands TNR of feral cats. It's become, you know, I actually talked to a vet at West Ridge, and, you know, Ohio State now and one of, and their vet program actually offers a specific program on TNR and community cats. I think if you invest in the program, it will be well worth it. I mean, I, my husband and I don't pay ourselves to do this, we are essentially paying to get, I, we run on donations, and we have, Bowling Green has actually given us a grant the past two years. It hasn't, it has not covered the thousand cats we've done, but I do fundraising, I mean, friends donate, we've done fundraisers. And so we go in, like if you have an area, there's, let's say there's fifty cats somewhere, we would go in and trap the cats, get them fixed, bring them back, you know, they get fixed one day, they come back like laid out from the next day.
How can you tell if it's a, a pet or a feral cat?
So that's my other.
I'm upset, something, my other cat.
You do raise a legitimate concern, with people, it's so many people that are old school that will put the cat out and they.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't tell.
Right.
If it's someone's owned cat, and it's, it, it's in the trap, and it doesn't have an ear tip, to us, that's a community cat that needs fixed, there's no way, and the vets will only know that if it's already been fixed, they'll only know that if it's been tattooed after it's already under sedation and shaking.
Interesting, so you say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you're, you're, I think what we're here to offer is, we're offer our help, but you're going to have to come to, where's the funding coming from? Who's going to help us? And it's going to have to be, and I have my own marketing business, but I'm, it's going to have to be an awareness campaign of what we're doing, and people understand, a lot of people don't like the cats, there's people that do not like cats, and there's people that are into the program. And I, I, I could write a book on everything that we've been through in six years, I mean, but.
So can you tell us approximately how much it is to spay or neuter a cat? And are you willing to work with us if we're willing to?
So Humane Ohio does cats for thirty-ish bucks. When I'm saying, when I say thirty-ish, is that if they're sick, they get extra. Another big thing is, I don't do this for my health and not to make sure that the cats go back out if they're sick. They will get extra care, such as if they're sick, they get a convenience shot, if it's absolutely necessary, and that's an antibiotic. So, and then Tudi Main Society does them for forty to fifty-ish. Community Pet Care does them for sixty-ish, we have a vet in Bellevue that does them for eighty. So the problem is, is that I don't get a lot of appointments at Humane Ohio and Tudi Main Society, because everybody goes there. I do work with Community Pet Care, and I can access those services, but it's at least sixty dollars a cat. The vet in Bellevue, she's amazing, Dr. Kinney, she's worked with me, she did probably three hundred and fifty of our cats last year, but she's eighty to ninety dollars a cat. And that's the same, I mean, we don't get free services and we're not paying for it, right? So it's going to be an investment on the city's part, there are grants out there, you can probably apply for, I, you know, I can research it, but.
So, so I've been made aware that, and I'm glad that I was, that feral, so, feral cats are important to help maintain populate, or. Yeah, our credit control, I guess I'm sure. So at what point do we know that we've been successful and not, because we don't want to get rid of all of our feral cats, right? Because that, I don't mean that, yeah, but I think if you, if you, what I'm saying is, if you, if you give them spay or neuter sooner or later. Yes, sir, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, I got it.
I don't want, we don't want to get rid of all of our.
Well, what ends up happening is you have so many, that really until you hit sixty percent of the population within, say, within the village, you're never going to get ahead of the curve.
No.
So at that point, yeah, at that point, i- if you could say, okay, let's pump the brakes a little bit, and we're, we're okay with where we're at, but you're doing routine maintenance. Because there will always be more, there's always going to be kittens. You're never, it's, it's going to be an ongoing project that generations will take.
Yeah, we don't want not to have cats, right? Like, that's not what we want, I mean, we, if you guys tell me North Baltimore, it's. like this, like this.
So if a cat is, I mean, your, your TNR program we set up, let's do that, a hundred bucks, let's say is the max, whatever. What if the cat is, like you said, six hundred bucks is quite pricey and, we can't, we can't tell the taxpayer that we spent six hundred bucks on a cat to get it fixed up. Example. So what do you do with cats that are in that...
Well, I mean kittens, though, I don't, I told myself I was not doing kittens this year, we're sixty kittens in right now. But you're always gonna have kittens in colonies. I mean, we, I could, I take them, I have a friend, I have two of the rescues that take them, you know, kittens are a different story. I'm talking your adult feral cat.
Can you put a max on what we, like, say we say sixty is our max? Would that be...
We would just have to make it work with the clinic. But then you're gonna have, I mean...
Cat or kitten, I don't wanna pay that kind of money for a cat to be fixed up.
What I would suggest is next year, the legislative authority budget, of my money, that you're gonna, that they're gonna put back every year and say that there's...
And you have to remember too, that that six hundred dollar figure that she threw out, that's for some, I'm going to go out and on a limb and assume that that's someone's, that they, they rescued that cat and that's now their own cat. That's not a community cat that's gonna go back.
And that's exactly what...
So, and that's, it's keeping within the budget.
I guess the, the question would be, not all cats can be returned.
Well, a kitten, a kitten, yeah, a kitten, we don't, right. Well, we don't test for rabies because that's not a fun process and you would never know.
No, there's really only one way to test for rabies.
You know, you guys, I, I wouldn't wait if you're having a problem. It's all gonna be you deciding on how much money you want to put into it. I could see with, I mean, again, we have to, when we go, especially when you do this when you first start out, and I give this lecture to people that have colonies, you go big or go home. We're gonna come and set, you know, we get ten appointments a day, we're gonna set ten traps. If it's eighty to a hundred bucks a cat, but I'm gonna tell you, believe me, it works. I mean, we've been doing this for three years as a nonprofit and six years. I can tell you from doing this and working with large colonies between, I say, we've worked from colonies between five cats and a hundred. And I can tell you, and you can ask anybody in Gypsy Lane Trailer Park, you just have to have a funding, someone has to be, maybe he helps or one of, you find people in the community that could help. It, it takes also some commitment on your all's end to make this work. And if you don't start somewhere and you just wait, you're gonna have, go from, let's say you have five hundred cats, you're, if, let's say half of those are females, you're gonna have fifteen hundred cats by next year. It, it just, I tell people, people, well, I don't wanna pay for that, it's not my cat. Well, you know what, it's not my cat either and I don't get free vet care. But you're gonna have to, I guess, work with the community and say, hey, this is actually gonna be a benefit eventually, but we're all have to be committed to making it work. I mean, we're committed to helping you, it's just, it's gonna have to be a consensus of is it, is it worth it to you guys? Can you find some money? And I can find you the vet appointment. It's finding the funding.
And may I ask how much Bowling Green is currently putting into this?
They gave us five thousand dollars three years ago, only two thousand dollars last year, and I think they realized the work we're doing and they gave us four last year. This year. I mean, it, it, I mean, I don't get, I mean, I guess because we, it's him and I, I mean, it's an army of two, we have gotten significantly less, now I'm getting a lot of calls from Toledo, but the amount of kittens and stuff, and I can always tell the season by my kitten calls and those guys, yeah, the kitten calls, Bowling Green, I've had hardly any calls about finding kittens this year.
One homeless cat. Mike?
I just wanna mention, I've, I've lived in Youngstown twice, which is a lot bigger than this town, and this, this situ, I mean, everyone knows I love cats. But they practiced a principle where we're just gonna liquidate the cats and get rid of them. And, and, and they had a problem that developed right after that, which was a massive rat problem. And, and to show you just how bad it can get if you don't keep some cats in town, I just, to show someone the problem, I said, come with me. And I took my hose out to my yard and I put it in a hole in the ground and I just turned the water on full blast and eighteen rats crawled out of the ground. That's how bad it can get if we don't keep a certain amount of those critters around because the other populations explode and stuff, and even squirrels and stuff like that. So personally, I, I like this concept myself, having experienced what it's like to have rats everywhere.
Yeah, I just wanna make one point. I have heard it more than once, the, how bad it is. I was told by in person how bad the trailer court is. We went out five days in, out here, both courts.
Eagle Landing?
Both courts. I mean, there's new, new site, both sides. In a total of five days, we saw five cats total. Whether, there would be one setting on property, you don't know if it was a pet let out. One day we saw two together, one day we saw a bobcat. It was a domestic cat, but it was a bobtail. We saw a total of five cats. And oh, it's so bad at the trailer court, a person from here...
Yeah, yeah.
If they don't like cats, then they have an issue. A bigger issue, I think.
I know, and again, I don't know where your problem is in town. I mean, that would be something if you decide to, you know, we could further pass this meeting.
So you said something about grants and that you might be able to help us with this? Would you be able to reach out to Josh?
I could send him some links.
Any information, like he could check into it for us?
Yeah. I mean, it's really, trap neuter return is not a hard, it's not hard. I mean, I, I don't, I really believe that it works and there's no place to take cats that no one wants. I mean, I get that, like, I don't, but if you fix the cat, then, you know, if you say, we've had big litters this year too, if you fix a female cat, they can have, you know, a healthy cat can have four to eight kittens. By six months into that, those kittens can get pregnant. I mean, you're, it, it goes back to just eventually, once you fix them, they're all gonna die of old age and you're not gonna have the problem.
Right.
Can we trap them ourselves and then give them to you?
Well, we, we don't mind using our traps. I mean, you could, but what I'm saying with this, if you want to...
So, but you would supply the traps that we could...
Well, we, ideally, it's just easier for us to come down here, I mean, set traps and I don't wanna, if we're gonna be making the drive, and that was what we'd have to talk about, is I don't wanna do two cats. I tell people, you might as well set and do ten. I mean, that's the most effective method is doing a large volume, you know, let's say twice a month, you do ten somewhere and ten somewhere else.
But how would that work if, because you had said you wanted volunteers?
Right.
So how would you work that?
Well, you would have, again, we could come down and meet another time. I would, we can't, we don't sit, for instance, cats don't usually come out until night, especially in the hot weather, these feral cats. We would need someone, we put traps out somewhere to watch the trap, I call it just watching the traps and, I mean, I do it all the time with people, they text me. And if they have the garage somewhere, we can put them until all of them are filled, then we come down and we pick them up and we take them in and then we bring them back. I mean, it's...
Can you tell, if you pick up a female, when they go to spay it, they would be able to tell that she's nursing kittens, wouldn't they? So you brought them back to the kittens?
A lot of times...
It's, that's the hard thing when you have, I mean, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be very transparent, she would still probably get fixed because once you get a cat in a trap, you do not wanna release it. And we, we do do spay aborts. I mean, that's sort of the, if they have fetuses, they're humanely euthanized. It's, I mean, that's the purpose of this exercise is because you asked us to come here because there's too many feral cats. I'm gonna tell you that out of the, we've done a hundred and twenty cats this year, I'm gonna tell you, we've probably done thirty to forty spay aborts. But that's why we're doing this, is because you don't want more cats. And I, I'm not gonna lie to you, I, it's part of one, part of the job that we do I don't like. But you're asked us to come here because there's too many cats around.
And part of the problem is the people.
Well, yeah.
Letting them out.
Right.
Aband, we don't use feral, it's abandoned or homeless. Yeah, and it's not the cats' fault, it's the people.
Your help for your cat neutering programs, that's like, so that you have somebody that goes out and like feeds them and no, and locates them and then you, like, like feed them for like a week at the same spot and then go out and you set the traps and so...
Yeah, we would just tell people whoever, let's say we worked in a, somewhere in North Baltimore, we try to stay in one location and get everybody done and then move on. So I call them the feeders of the caretakers. We simply just get a phone number and, I mean, I have five hundred phone numbers on my phone right now. Hey, are you, we're there tonight, we schedule, have a schedule, we work with them, like, don't feed the cats in the morning, because hungry cats are the best way to get in the traps. So that's just, it's not really that hard, it's just making, yeah.
So Pat, I have a question for you again, Tom. Since you feed the cats, would you be willing to work with them to, I'm not asking you to to set the traps, but to text them?
We're gonna, he's a D and I'm gonna be a D, and I'm having extreme hip problem.
But what I'm saying is just to text them if you, if you're feeding them and they're in the trap, because you would set the trap, right?
Oh yeah, I saw them in a trap.
But you would text them and let them know the trap was, was full.
But just work with us, allow us onto your property and...
Well, it's not their property, no, it's different areas.
Different, okay.
And with Bowling Green, is there anyone at the, at the city that assists you in any way? Maybe it's a part-time as part of their full-time position?
You're looking at it right here.
Cause I mean, I'm thinking that maybe we could donate a few hours of Jacob's time to assist in some way to give the problem addressed quicker.
I can't tell you sit here and tell, I mean, you could, you could believe me or not believe me, but I really think that, I mean, it works. I mean, I can tell you from, I mean, everybody calls me in Bowling Green to help with the cats and even people Toledo, and I can tell you from working on several colonies over for three years that, can I say it's ever gonna go completely away? No, I'm not gonna give you any guarantees, but it...
It won't completely go. Jacob?
In Portage, Ohio, I single-handedly removed ninety-six cats from that town. I know it's not the method that you guys appreciate, but the town voiced their opinion, they wanted them out. So I, unfortunately, not unfortunately, the problem that when you do get them to baby neuter, if you bring them back, they're still in nuisance. They're still peeing and peeing people's yards and stuff.
I'm not gonna disagree with you, but I don't have anywhere to take the cat.
So the village of Portage will allow me to take the sick ones, the old ones to kill shelters. I just hear that way.
I got a phone call today about that.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I've had a few residents come in about them scratching on their, their sort of property and also defecating on their property.
So that was the process in which Portage allowed me to take care of that situation is that I did get a fund from Portage, they allowed so much of this baby neutering. Beyond that point, if it was a kid, now I would take it to the major shelter or whatever, but if it was sick and old, I would drive them over to Buckland County to kill children.
I mean, I don't, I don't advocate for, I don't put cats down. You're asking me to, I, I don't support that. We do the humane method. I'm actually on board with helping you fix the cats. Unless the cat, so if a cat we see is, is outwardly sick, FPLB, it's been in a fight, it's old, I mean, a lot of feral cats, like, you know, they're sick. I mean, because no one controls the population. But if that happens, we absolutely, I mean, the cat's sick. But healthy cats, I mean, once you, let's, I don't know, again, how many, I don't even know your numbers, but let's say it was a hundred we catch this year, you're not gonna have kittens next year then. That's the biggest thing is, so I don't, I don't have a place where, you know, I take, I can do cats. We go in and we humanely control the population, so.
I think that's what we're looking for now, correct? At this point? And then, yeah, we don't have to figure this thing out tonight, right? Like, we're just starting.
I mean, I, I understand people, I, the defecating, I completely, that's why we're here, I mean, it controls down the road, they don't have that problem with defecating and spraying, I mean, but I can tell you from fixing a lot of male cats, that the fighting stops and the spraying goes down. Because, I mean, when there's a female, a couple females, with a lot of toms, you're gonna have a lot of fighting and spraying and it's, but I can't give you instant results, it's just a process.
Well, I'd like to proceed with working with, for the little cats to amend the ordinances that I proposed council a while ago. And I'd like to propose tabling our next, our third reading and then probably just bringing a whole new ordinance to council's attention probably at the July of the...
And I would like to see you take out the penalty for feeding the cats because she even stated that feeding the cats is not the problem. Does it cause, it didn't cause the problem and it's not gonna fix the problem. So there's three areas in there that I would like to have taken out that, you know, the, unless you guys disagree, but I, I believe that's something that needs to be removed.
Like you, you don't know the scope of our, our problem.
How many cats do you think you have? I mean, I don't, I don't...
I don't even know. I've been around a lot more last couple of weeks, I've been around this street.
How many cats do you see in a week, a week's time?
One spot, I mean, specific spots that we do, there's four. We do an apartment complex, which would be private, I doubt if you'd be allowed there. There might be twelve, that is the most. And maybe another place, two. And the trailer court is absolutely exaggerated, in my opinion.
It's a, it's a, it's a lot more, I have insomnia, so I'll be outside at night. The cats just go from house to house, they check that one out, go to the next one, another cat comes along, so there's just a trail they have where they go all around town checking places, so there's, there's...
I mean, there's a certain property that, the day alone that I went to, the lady even told me she had eighteen cats in her house and outside.
Oh yeah, I know.
There's other properties that I maintained, started going around and looked, there's multiple, multiple.
It's something we have to regroup on and try to, you know... You're gonna have to, another thing is you probably have to let citizens, you know, I don't know how you, you, you get the notices out, but probably interested people are just gonna have to come in.
Yeah, we should send them out with our public, with the water notices and all that.
Yeah, some sort of public awareness, so that way you still get some of these colony caretakers onboard.
On our website.
Yeah, you get the colony caretakers onboard now, we've got started.
So if I could interrupt you, I know we have lots of questions and I think we're kind of excited to begin working with you on this and we'll have Josh and you coordinate. But I did wanna ask, Mrs. Patterson, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
No, not particularly. If cats come to my house, I'll feed them. If they stay there and wanna stay there, they get fixed, I take them.
Right.
You know, everybody's fixed there.
And we appreciate it.
The rat will have to go back somewhere and, he doesn't wanna be caught. I, I have cages, I know how to set cages and I've got my hips and knees, I can know, okay, no bar, you know, it's seventy-nine and, but I know how to, oh, to catch things.
Right. Well, we appreciate the discussion tonight, you showed us a lot of information, so we will be working on this within our committees. And like I said, Josh, if you could reach out to him, especially with those grants, that would be wonderful.
We can regroup in a phone call and...
Yeah, a phone call and I'll look into Bowling Green's code and see if we can copy and paste it.
They actually had a meeting and I actually got them to take the cats off there because they said they about feeding the wild animals and I went to a meeting and I said, it's just, it's not, but they invested in my program. It was like that because we work at it. I mean, essentially, it's, it's Kevin and I, but I believe in, I believe in my nonprofit what I'm doing. I mean, I certainly don't do this.
Can we get you shirts, by the way, if you're part of that?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you for coming. I wanna thank all of you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jacob, please, unless you want to...
Thank you so much.
Great, you guys.
Appreciate it.
Nice meeting everybody.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh, if it's possible, a discussion on a new start date for...
Yeah, we, he was unable to start earlier than the original start date of June twenty-third.
So I would stop to Mason and ask if he was capable to, the reason why, because we put that date on here because he's gonna be on vacation. So I would stop to Mason and ask if he was capable, the reason why, because we put that date on here because he's gonna be on vacation. My thoughts were, we need to get him in here and start cross-training up here. Everybody needs to know how important that is. I, I'm, it's very, very important to get this gentleman here. And I directed Josh Bender to make sure that his first, you know, he's our economic board man, he's gonna be working on grants, certain stuff for us. His first responsibility is to cross-train up here and that way we are covered if anything happens.
Thank you.
Um, that's gonna be, but he was not able to start. I wanted to get him started. If he was on vacation, it was fine. People was gonna be going cross-training and Matt was gonna be going cross-training. Yeah, so he will start cross-training that day and then once he's trained, he's a very smart young man, met him. I told Josh, going forward, anybody that we hire in these type of capacities needs to be up here so you guys can, they can introduce themselves to you and you guys get an opportunity to put a face with the person that you guys are hiring. It's very important. I apologize that we didn't do that with these two, but we're not happy to get a little important with that capacity. You guys are the ones hiring, you guys should be, you guys should know who you're hiring.
Appreciate that. Okay, Dave, did you have anything else that we need to-
No.
Okay. Did you have any questions for Dave? All right, then we are going to move on to economic and community development. Phil's not here and there's nothing listed. Does anyone have any questions for Phil?
I talked to Bill, told him that we were gonna schedule that meeting when Mason comes in and starts, when he's available. Or, cause we definitely want him involved in that area, so.
He's in charge of that dinner.
We'll see.
All right, if there's no questions, we're gonna move on to the village administrator.
We'll see.
Uh, I can talk about everything, anything, but I think I'm good. Unless there's any questions for me, I can answer now, if I want to talk or anything, discussions. We're good.
All right, um, by the way, do you want me to talk to Mr. Carlson?
The C above covered it. We're good.
We're moving right along now.
Was.
Any questions for Matt? All right, we're gonna move on. Mayor?
Yeah, we got a flex time policy that pertains to our department heads. There's gonna start being some oversight with, with that. I'm gonna start monitoring that. Does anybody know what flex time is for our department heads? Our department heads are overtime exempt, so right now, um, our, our salary employees do not get overtime. They're not paid any overtime. They're exempt from any overtime. Rather than, by law, so rather than taking advantage of that, we have a flex time policy. Actually, we've got two of them in our, in our village, which unfortunately, it just got left in my attention. And I don't know, we're gonna clean it up, but um-
You're talking comp time?
No, no sir. It's, it's, I don't wanna confuse you with comp time. Comp time is not, comp time pertains to employees. Um, uh, overtime, allowed employees.
So this is just for salary?
Yes, because salary employees are overtime exempt by law, right? But we can give this benefit and we should give this benefit. I mean, these guys are up here two hours past there. You know, we should give them something, but it's hour for hour where comp time is time and a half per, per hour, right? Cause that's what they would have been paid. But anyhow, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, tail this like the comp time as far as, if you've got it coming, then our salary employees need to put that in, let us know. It still has to get approved, right? And approved to be used, right? So, because they are overtime exempt, that's what our policy says. So done a very bad job of watching that, right? I'm gonna start monitoring that a little bit better, talking to Josh. Um, we do not currently have remote work, right? We're expected to work here, not from home. Does anybody got a concern with that?
No, do you have a problem with that?
No, no. We do not have a problem with that.
No.
Was there no policy created during COVID?
No, there was not. We wasn't gonna have it.
I wanna go back to the-
Yes, sir, flex time.
Just flex time. Explain that to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. So flex time is, so, um, when, when a salaried employee, because they're overtime exempt.
Right.
So right now, they would be on their own time, Matt and Josh, and don't get anything in return because they're salaried.
Right.
So any overtime, so they, they work their eight hours, but a salaried employee is kind of expected to work whatever they have to to get the job done.
And a salary.
Yes, sir. So, yes, sir. So what we do in the village of North Baltimore, they came up with flex time.
Which means what?
Which means that they can, um, put in for those two hours and we will allow them to take that two hours-
Off like on Friday?
Whatever they work to within the, within the pay period, but it still has to be approved. So if we're, if there's something going on here, we need them here, it can be denied.
I gotcha.
Yes, but, but what happens is, no, we haven't really monitored it at all. We just kind of, so what I've asked is, well, what I said we're gonna do is we're gonna, if, like tonight, if they want their flex time, Matt and Josh, they has it coming to them, they will fill out a document that says I got it, whatever time they have.
So how are department heads do that? So they can leave-
They are department heads. Yes, sir, they are department heads.
Our outside department heads, not these guys. I'm saying like Josh and Brian.
Yes, but see, they don't even, they, do you get anything from Josh?
They probably don't fill out the paper.
That's exactly right. That's exactly what I'm saying. We don't do a very good job of documenting.
So how are you gonna document? What's-
So they're just filling out, like, right? If somebody's got flex time coming to them, they will fill it out just like we would comp time. They, that's what they do for comp time. And then say, you know, um, if, like, tomorrow, they would say, um, we work two and a half hour, like, two and a half hours coming to me for, for flex time or tonight. They have to use it within the pay period. Where comp time, you can, they, they don't carry over for, I think, a year, I think, if you, a year.
But you have to, so if they attend in the meeting tonight, spend two hours here, let's just say.
Yes, sir.
So just as an example, spend two hours here, by, by Friday, they have to use that two hours.
They have to put in for it and then they have to request to be able to use it, yes, just like comp time.
But next week, they can't say, hey.
Well, it's within the pay period.
It's within the pay period, there's two weeks.
Oh, it's two week pay period. Okay, gotcha.
So how are you gonna monitor? What's the, what's the plan?
Just the paperwork.
Yeah, the paperwork. Yeah, that shows, there's a paper trail that shows that we got it and we, and we request, and we're requesting use.
Yeah, and they've used it or they elected not to use it. Gotcha, I, I understand.
It doesn't carry over though, it has to be paid.
No, sir, it has to be used within, by our policy. We've already corrected that policy. Go ahead, Josh.
Can I, can I explain how we did it at the county?
Yes, do you guys get flex time at the county?
Some places did, but we would, if, I went in at work at eight o'clock in the morning and we didn't open until nine. I would mark that on my timesheet, one hour flex, okay? It, it all had to do with your timesheet. Everything you had to do was with your timesheet. Whether it was comp time, flex time, vacation or sick, it was all marked on, yeah.
Okay.
It was all marked on a, on a pay sheet or your timesheet, that I'm taking one hour flex on such and such date. And, and again, they could approve it or deny it. So it was all the-
That's what our, that's what our policy says right now.
It was all done through our timesheet.
The problem is, right now, if somebody has flex time, it doesn't show anywhere.
Yeah.
Doesn't show anywhere.
Okay, so we can add into their-
Well, it's on the time, it's on the timesheet. Our, April can easily tell, hey, well, they spent extra hours on this day, on this day.
Well, if you just said we had an extra column on there.
Obviously, it all adds up total if you get eighty or more.
Right, so if you have an extra column, we know exactly that you had two hours flex time.
Okay, and yes, it has been going on forever here in the village of North Baltimore, which leads us to a lot of the problems that we've had in the past that I explained to Mr. Bender. Um, Mr. Bender come, is concerned that he came in and was baptized by fire coming in here, like, a lot of us. And I said, the reason why you are is because, and I asked him because of the oath, right? Because there's no oversight. Do you agree with that? Do we have that conversation yesterday?
I think there's some oversight, but there's-
There was lack of oversight. I mean, it-
In your personal opinion, yes.
You as, you as a council member, you as a council member, you as a council member, in the past, you guys believed that there was lack of oversight in the village of North Baltimore, the best, wherever we work. So we're gonna get a handle on some of that. This is one of the things, one of a few things that we're starting to look at, that I didn't know that could have potentially been issued. Until I went back to work.
I gotta say, doing all this adds extra paperwork, adds extra time from doing our jobs. It adds a whole new process, adds up more forms, it overwhelms April.
Well, explain to me how, if we're just gonna add a column to the, the pay, the, the paperwork that you fill out now, we're just adding a column that says flex time. So you're putting your regular hours here and your flex time.
She has to vague them all in the system also. She only, only, already does have her comp time, but she has to carry on the process. And she has to delete all that after every two weeks, cause they obviously don't carry over that's two weeks.
It's, it's not gonna be a problem for April.
I think it will be.
And I'll, I don't think we'll be able to talk to her.
I am not supportive of this.
Can I-
That's all right. You don't have to be.
Why? What, something had to happen. Some switch had to gotten flipped. That's like, somebody thought somebody was taking advantage of something.
It's just oversight. It's just making sure that we are, our checks and balances are in place.
I trust Matt, Brian and Josh to do their jobs the way they have been doing it.
Sure.
And I think the additional oversight is unnecessary and I think that I will continue, I would like to continue working as is.
Because how many people are we talking to?
Okay.
We're talking about our own salary group.
I know, but like, we're a village, there's not a ton of them. How many are there?
I would like to make guys to be working and not be doing paperwork and do an additional style, learning additional bureaucracy.
Is it like seven?
I wanna tell you guys, it's already a policy. We're just gonna enforce the policy, is what we're gonna do. It's already a policy, the flex time is a policy.
Who thinks that a people?
There's a lot of policies. This isn't, should be doing this meeting.
Just no-
It's just in the policy because I mean, it shouldn't be doing.
How many salary people are there employed by the village of North Baltimore?
Seven?
Five.
I, I keep them up with five.
Yeah, two, two chief of police, the chief of police, the chief of the EMS, you've got Matt, you've got Josh, um, you've got Brian and Josh. So it's six.
Six, six.
So you've done that, six employees that we booked had their, why?
Hotter, there had to be an issue and I don't believe there's an issue.
You're changing something in a group there for years.
We can't trust our employees. Unless there's an, an incident that has happened, then we need that brought to our attention. But I agree, I think we should continue as is.
Well, we'll talk to the attorney then and see who, you know, if we can, if we should, you know, I mean, if that's what we're, but if you're-
A minute, we're gonna refer to the attorney now, but we won't refer to the attorney on the use of equipment.
No, Matt, that's not what I said.
Well, no, because we, we, we referred to the attorney and he said, that's not a good idea to use the use of equipment.
How do we just get back here?
Well, because now you're referring to the attorney when you disagree with us, but, well.
What I said is I suggested we try this for a six-month trial basis, is what I'd like to.
I'm sorry, you, you said we'll refer to the attorney and that's where I'm going with that.
I was talking about the last conversation, yes, and, and with this, it's already a policy, right? And we're going to enforce policies.
Right, but you're changing the way you enforce the policy.
No, no, what I'm saying is it hasn't been enforced. There's the problem. It has not been enforced, just like a lot of the policies that we've got in the village of North Baltimore.
There's a lot of policies.
And I'm gonna continue, and I'm gonna start enforcing the policy.
There's a lot of policies you're not going for, going forward with a lot of ways.
Well, I can, we're talking about-
People have gotten that flex time, correct?
What I'm talking about?
People have gotten and used the flex time.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, of course.
So we've been using it, it's fine.
We've been basically running on a merit system.
Yeah, yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Right. So if they say they got these hours, they just, they take it upon themselves to take it up.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, are they, are they taking it upon themselves, or are you asking, wait a minute, I have a question? Or are you, and I, I would like to talk to my department heads to-
Do you just want restrictions and I-
Do you, do you ask for the, the flex time or do you just take it upon your-
No, you just take it.
I, I, let me just find some, please, thank you. Do you just take your flex time or do you ask for it and, you know, report that you're going to take it? Or do you just take it?
I just take it. I just take it. I make sure it's in my calendar when I am in the office.
Okay.
I, I make sure I tell as much as possible upfront here with Matt, April and Kylie. And I think more restrictions, it's ironic, it takes away our flexibility.
You know it, doesn't it? I'm tougher here.
I think it's necessary and will create bureaucracy. And again, we are trying to do our job here and this is just more paperwork with little positive impact. You know, we'll do this off our employees' work.
I would like to talk to my department heads. I'd also, I'll call a community meeting and ask them how they feel about this and, you know.
When I'm talking about asking the attorney, then who directs the workforce in the village, is what, is what I was referring to.
I, I direct the workforce in the village.
Under the authority of, right?
An authority of council and yourself.
Yes, council being the whole, the majority, not individual. So make sure that we know that.
Well, correct, everything has to go to a vote. I'm only one person, not saying-
Exactly, and that's what I was talking about referring to, we'll, we'll get everybody covered. Of course.
I, I, I think I'd like to hear from the department heads too, if it's gonna directly affect them. Cause, you know, when I worked at places, if there was something and they never talked to me, like in the military, I, it always felt like you didn't include us in the discussions. I'd like to hear what they have to say. I don't know what that would mean, but I would like to hear from the department heads.
But is there, is there oversight in the military?
Well, see, we did, we did it the way we're doing it now.
So did you have to report to somebody what you was doing?
You told your section chief.
Did they know where you was at?
Yeah, they, they told our section chief, but we didn't do the, the paperwork because of this issue. It's, it added a lot of bureaucracy, cause then, then it had to go to the sergeant and then it had to go to the lieutenant and then it had to go to the captain and then, so I, I, I'd like to hear from them and then, then we can, I mean, we've got good department heads. I'm sure we'll come up with a good plan. We've got good leadership here. I mean, we'll come up with a good, a good plan, but I would like to hear from them, if it's gonna affect them directly.
So we're gonna enforce, we're gonna enforce the, the policy as it is, right? Um, and as it says, um, so Josh is, you're gonna-
But wait, you're gonna enforce the policy as it is before we even get to talk to our department heads? Because you just said you were gonna ask the attorney.
Hold on, the policy's already there, what? Well, I don't know what you're talking about.
We're changing Matt, how many years of doing it this way.
But guys, don't you-
There's within the policy manual what we're doing.
We're doing it within the policy manual.
No.
In a way, yeah. Well, it's in part of the timesheet, in a way we are in the question.
No, we are not.
In a way we are.
Well, first of all, there's two policies. We need to fix that, we're gonna fix that, right? And second of all, right, we're gonna follow what the policy says.
My first-
And second-
The first issue is if we have two policies, you can't follow any policy because we don't have a policy.
Yes, we-
Okay.
And who gets to make the jizzle policy you're choosing.
We're gonna go, we're gonna, we're gonna figure it out, right?
I, I guess what I'm saying is, if the policy that's currently happening, whether it's a policy or not, but what is happening now is working.
Yes.
I don't wanna change it, let's make that then the policy. If there is a problem, show it to us and then let's make a correction.
Right, sorry, I agree with that too.
That's, that's, am I, am I understanding this correctly?
We can work, we can go forward and when we do get that section in the policy manual, we can make adjustments. And correct everything, condense it all.
From my understanding, that this body does not want people filling out time that, that they accrued and then to get the approval to use it, according to what our policy says. Is that what I'm understanding?
I wanna talk to the head of departments to see how it's all been running and how it's been-
They've been doing this for decades sometimes. And to change up this policy is going to take away a lot of the flexibility they have in their job and again, add a lot of paperwork to April, myself.
Well, I'm not gonna argue about it, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna force a policy.
I'm gonna call a community meeting for my head of departments.
Please do.
I would ask to do this.
Can you, can Rebecca make sure that we all get a copy of those policies that are out there before the meeting?
That might clear it up right here, so we understand all.
We also, I'm gonna be going forward and starting time clocks within this office, within the police department and within the EMS department.
Well, I-
Is there a reason we don't trust our people anymore?
No, there's not.
Cause that is what it comes from.
Other, other departments have, go ahead, what's that, Dave?
Um, and that's for the hourly employee, right?
Yeah, it's for everybody.
No, for the hourly employees, the salary employee that should not have to punch clock.
Which, so, so a time clock, were they, I'm just saying, I, I wanna clarify.
So what, what time should they report? What am I missing? You tell them what time to be here and what time to leave. The salary allows those.
Eight to five.
Then they can, or if they come in seven, they leave at four, or two.
I have a question. Are we talking the time, do they have to come in and punch the clock in?
They do that, they do that.
Okay, wait a minute. For, especially for EMS and police.
The police, that's gonna be a problem for police.
Absolutely, because, well, you know, if there's an emergency and, and they're coming in to help with an emergency, okay, now they're gonna have to come to the office to clock in?
No, 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 that would be, that would be documented.
How?
Yeah.
When they come in, when they-
But then that's already being documented, why do we need a time clock?
Okay, so here's another scenario. What if, don't we have multiple officers outside of North Baltimore, living outside of North Baltimore?
Yeah.
Okay, so aren't there days that they go to court without coming into work?
Sure, then they would clock in, when they get here, then they would-
No, they're gonna have to clock in. If they're going to court, they're gonna have to clock in, go back to court.
No, 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 no.
Come back here, clock in, clock out and then off for the day.
So if they're in Bowling Green, they live to Bowling Green, they go to the court and then they, they come to North Baltimore, they clock in and they document, I was at court, just like they would if, if for overtime or any of that.
Why are you changing all of this?
For oversight. We need to know what's going on in the village of North Baltimore.
You can't, you can't give us one example of a problem you've had with any of our employees.
Should we, shh, well, um, so should we get rid of the time clocks at the, at the street department?
I asked for an example of anything that you've had a problem with of our employees that's documented that you have a problem with.
What I'm asking is, should we get rid of the time clocks at the street department and the water department?
No, all, all hourly employees should have to punch the clock.
So in the police department, they do not have the clock?
I think the police just-
So you're saying all hourly employees, but we're saying-
The police is a little different.
So the, none of the police department is, is hourly?
Yeah, but they don't punch at the time clock?
Well, because, I don't know how that's gonna work.
EMS don't punch the time clock, uh-
No, I, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't think in the policy, the process, process over there is broken, so why do we throw in this in some way?
That's what I'm saying. Have I not answered my question? Have you had an issue, a documented issue of somebody misusing our time? Yes or no?
And if you have, then we address that.
Yes or no? Do, have, do you have a documented issue of someone abusing their time?
Potential.
What, no, I asked if you had a document, a documented situation that you, that you handled. Yes or no?
Potentially. I'm not prepared to bring that before you yet.
I, just, just as a, I had, I've had the police committee twice and Dave and I once went over this and there were a lot of issues with the police department. Now, I can't say all the other departments.
Issues? What do you mean, clarify issues?
It was just gonna be a real problem. It was just gonna be a real problem trying to, to, because they live in different places, and they go do this, and it was, it, logistics is the word. Um, I, I'd like to hear from Dave on the police for sure.
So, I'd like to go back and ask, so you're saying that a salary employee isn't required to clock in at any time, and, and that's, that's, that's not true? And, and can leave, and can leave at any time?
Well, they don't leave at any time, not at all, they have to put in hours.
No, if we, if we, okay, so our department heads, right, are all salary employees.
Sure, like Brian Rocks, what, what is he supposed to report?
What, what time does he report now?
At seven AM.
Does he report every day at seven AM?
Yes.
Then what's the problem?
What's the problem?
If I find a problem with.
He doesn't need, but he clocks in, are we saying that he doesn't need to clock in?
Sometimes, no.
Does Josh, does Josh clock in?
Yes.
Alright, time sheet, writing, so they just write in their times?
Yeah.
They're not actually punching a mechanical clock?
I think they are.
What, I'm not sure, I'm hardly sure about Brian and Josh, but I definitely do that.
I don't, I can't answer that.
I think, I think.
I don't understand.
Wait, I see it.
We haven't had an issue, and I don't understand why we're making this an issue.
I, I don't think.
Just doing what we've been doing, it's not broke, so don't fix it.
I'm a salaries employee.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
I don't, I punch a time clock.
Sure.
I come to work, there are some days I have to be there at six o'clock in the morning.
Do you work for yourself?
No.
Okay.
I work for another company.
Okay.
So, there are some days I have to be there at six o'clock in the morning, there are some days I don't have to be, I may have a meeting at nine, and I don't have to be there till then. But, that doesn't mean that just because I don't have to be there till nine, I get to leave at, at four o'clock. So, I have to work that extra hour, I, as an adult, being entrusted by the company that I work for, they know, I understand that too. So, I put, so I, I put in my eight hours a day.
Okay.
Right, and if I don't, so, let's say, on Thursday, right, I golf every Thursday.
Sure.
So, I leave at two thirty.
Sure.
So, I go in at six.
Sure.
So, I can leave early.
Okay.
And that's the same thing I have, I can get called at three AM at night in an hospital.
I just wanna make sure that I understand that, they pick and choose the hours that they wanna work, is that what I'm understanding?
If the job's getting done, why is?
Hey, I wasn't, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So, I'm in a situation where I can pick and choose when I come in, okay? And I do that according to the schedule of the day.
Okay.
All right, so, our water department, our street department have fixed times to be there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're entrusting our salary employees, which are our department heads.
Sure.
That have worked their way to that position, and instilled our trust from the village, to be in that position, and to run human beings.
Okay.
And to be leaders of men and women, correct? Am I correct in saying that? That's why we've instilled them in that position.
Correct.
All right, so, we should allow them enough trust to know that they're coming in at seven, and they're leaving at five, or whatever their hours requi- are required. And if they have flex time, they take their flex time, and we let them do it. Now, if there's somebody abusing that, right, it's gonna be evident in the amount of work being produced, right? Or the amount of work not being produced, or things not getting done, or through hearsay or reporting from someone else.
And then what?
You address that, and then with that, you address that.
And, and then we address that directly with the employee.
And the thing is, is, you guys are, you put in a lot of hours.
They do, there's nobody, there's nobody questioning that, there's nobody, guys, there's nobody questioning that.
You're questioning that.
No, 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 there needs to be some oversight.
I, I disagree.
There needs to be some oversight, is what I'm trying to ask, so.
If it isn't broke, if we don't fix it.
So, we're, we're right back to.
Micromanaging our.
Oh, good lord.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Well, Mayor, I, my, my perspective is, I, if we, when it comes to department heads, I, I want, I, I wanna give them the trust of. I trust them that they're gonna run with it.
I don't disagree with that, like, right, like, nobody's challenged it up till now.
And I don't think you're saying they're dishonest either.
No, that's not, well, I.
Are you? You said, well, what, what do you mean, are, are you?
We have had problems with our department heads in the past, guys.
But we don't have it now.
The same, is it the same department heads we have right now?
No, what I'm talking, no, what I'm talking about is the poli- is enforcing the policy that is there, and that's what we're gonna do. All right, so.
Wait a minute, what do you mean, that's what we're gonna do? You just said we have two policies, no, we're not gonna do that.
Yes, we are gonna enforce the policy, but.
What policy? You have two of them.
Flex time policy, I'm gonna move on.
Well, wait a minute, I'm sorry, but, no, I'm in charge of this meeting, and you're not gonna move on.
Well, then, I'm gonna excuse myself for this.
Well, then, that's fine.
I would like, I think one thing though, if we could all get the policy, so we could see what the actual.
That would be a very good idea.
Absolutely, but I don't believe any changes should be made until the council addresses it.
Nobody can ch- nobody can change, our two policies. Council change, council changes and adopts policy, that's it. We're gonna enforce the policy that is in place. Thank you for your time. I got a couple more issues, I'll address them next time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you give us those policies?
I will, I will, we're with Josh, and get him.
The policy is, they are archaic, they're old, they need to be updated, yes, but, and if you, if you interpret them in a way, there should be more o- oversight. But, we need to be thinking about the efficiency of our, of, of the village, how well are we working, how many hours?
I, I didn't hear you, I apologize, could you start again, say what you said?
I said, the policies are, are in place, are archaic, they need to be updated and simplified.
Well, then, our policy will be.
Yes, will you please send those to me?
All of them.
Yes, I will. So, we can all look it over, and we'll. Yes, and, and again, if, if we wanna go with a strict interpretation, yes, there should be more oversight. I can see that, but I'm thinking mostly in regards to what we have been doing with our, our department heads, and it is a perk. It is a perk what we're doing with the flex time, but again, I'm trying to make it flex time, not inflexible time. We, we don't wanna have all these, these guardrails on something that you're all used to.
Guys, you don't have to explain to me, 'cause the way, the way I see it, that we're allowing our department heads the flexibility.
Yes.
To take the time that they've worked over their forty.
Yes.
Whenever they want to.
Based on trust.
Based on trust, and based on the fact that they are gonna know whether they can leave for that two hours on Friday.
And based on they're getting their work done, and I don't think any of, I mean, our.
Plus, I've, I've been to the emergency room a couple times now, and I think, I couldn't see, 'cause something was wrong with my eyes. I think you were there, and I know Phil was there. Our people go over and above, and to me, I, I, I think, I think we stay with that. Where I think the issue is, is I think we need to take the old policy that's currently in place and make the corrections. But, when we have department heads, uh, and this was even true in the military, the department's heads, we, we gave them enough respect to say. We trust you're gonna do the right thing, now, the privates?
Yeah, well.
That's why they punch the clock.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, what, how about this one?
Yeah, formation.
Do we agree that we bring all of our department heads together in one, so we can all talk, so we're not.
Yes.
Have the meeting at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's schedule that, um, my, my schedule is, uh, very flexible, I know yours is not, so let us know when you're available. Paula, or how's yours this summer?
Will be good, come Monday.
Okay.
Oh, you're gonna line up?
I would like to address this as soon as possible, and if we have to make a policy change.
Do we have to wear our shirts?
Can I say a few more things? Until the time the Brian, Josh, and Matt, uh, break my trust, I'm going to allow them to do their job.
I'm a little worried about Matt, but other.
But the policy is, well, how we are, how we're going with flex time right now.
I'm just sick of them talking so much during meetings, that's all I have to say.
Just remember, you're gonna give me, I have that forty-eight hours, so I would prefer, you give me that extra twelve hours?
I'm all in favor of more efficient, being an efficient village, and not additional paperwork that is a compromise.
I would request that you be there, Matt, you be there, we'll get with Brian, and Josh, and Dave, and.
Yeah, Dave's sick right now, I think, and he.
Yeah, he's not feeling very good.
And, and, and Bill, that's, so we'll, we'll, we'll get, you know, let them know, and.
There's the policy, thank you.
Do we have the other policy?
No, I don't know where that's at.
It's a few pages behind that one.
Thank you. This is one of them, what is the other one?
It's, it's part of a, that is the flex time policy, that's what, four point something.
Four point one oh.
A couple pages before that, that is, also tags, encompasses flex time.
And flex time is accrued time, it's accrued, it's not borrowed time, it's accrued time.
Explain that to me, what's what's.
I'm not sure accrued is the right word there.
But does this, this, this doesn't apply to department heads, though, this is, the way I'm reading this.
That does also, I believe, specifically talk about, talks about employees that are not salary.
Yep, there will be a problem, if we have to punch a time clock with EMS, there will be a problem.
Yes.
Because we work seven in the morning to seven at night, seven at night to seven in the morning, okay? But if we end up staying over, like, how do I?
In my case, you went, you were seven to about nine thirty PM.
Right, so that's a different time.
Right.
Because they pay us differently, day shift versus night shift.
Right.
So, if you, if, like me, if I'm working a night shift, but I had to stay over, I'm now working day shift.
Well, I could see where it would be a nightmare for EMS and.
Oh, that would just.
So, that, that just.
And I'll be honest, uh.
I don't additional work for Lafferty.
I, I, uh, when I was in the, when I was taken, my head was spinning like, like on the worst roller coaster you ever were on. And actually having them stay over while, while they were getting me in control, made a big deal, knowing their voices, because I couldn't see. So, uh, I can see this becoming a real hassle, but it's a, it's a real advantage having them in those kinda cases.
It's too much of a mistake, there's no, there's no reason to change the policy or change what we're doing.
Okay, um, does, does anyone have, that, like, we could schedule this, uh, meeting with our, our department heads, and of course, we have to check with them to make sure they're available. But if we do it during.
Well, we have a meeting, we have a meeting, the commu- community of public works three thirty on Thursday.
Yeah, but is that, that's not, that's not forty-eight hours?
No, but, but that's the only meeting I know on the schedule that I've seen so far.
What, what's my next Wednesday, what, what's next Wednesday look for everybody?
I can do next Wednesday. What time are you thinking here?
What, whatever time works for everyone else.
I'm not sure if everyone got the invite for next Wednesday from the local health department for their ACT assessments, it's for, uh, active communities tool assessment. What I'm looking at right now.
Right.
I forgot the invite, calendar invites, uh, but they're, they're coming here, um.
What time?
Uh, ten AM on Wednesday, June.
Well, I think you want afternoon, right?
Yeah, it's got.
What's the, what's the earliest you can do?
The earliest I can do is four o'clock.
Four?
Yeah.
So, Wednesday at four, does that work with everyone, and then?
What are we calling it?
I'm sorry?
What are we calling it?
Um, committee meeting, I mean, for, you know, our department.
It would be under.
Policy, personal policy.
Committee meeting for, uh, flex time policy.
Right, um, and four o'clock, um, our employees get off at what time, four thirty or five?
I get off at four thirty. Which I, not even bankers' hours, that's what I understand, it's like nine to five, those are those that get off at four o'clock.
That's what we call flex time.
We only get to bank on Saturday.
I heard they don't even work, I heard they don't even work.
Those times, there's customers that make them work a lot.
Okay, so.
There's gonna be some now, I can tell you that.
Again, do they get off at four thirty or five? Josh, help me.
Uh, April, yeah. April and Kylie usually.
Well, I'm thinking Josh and.
If they come in at seven.
We can keep them until five or so, and then they get the flex hours next day.
Okay, four o'clock on Wednesday?